This is a special city council meeting. It's Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, so. With that, roll call.
Mayor Accors.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Spring.
Aye.
Councilor Pendergrass.
I think I just heard the door close.
Yep. There it is. Councilor Pendergrass?
Here. Not used to five black men. Three minutes in, but I'm not even good to people.
All right, we have a couple items on our special agenda to look at. This one was employment vacancies and the second one is purchasing a new more public work zone. The first item is a. I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve the proposed timeline, provided memo, and have the city administrator proceed with. And conduct, conduct the hiring of each person, each position. Give that your second.
Second.
So in the memo, the basis attached. This is the. The job application or guidelines. So, the first item in your packet was a. Reference to a full-time finance officer. We discussed this back in July, I think it was sixteenth of this year, and. We were. It was a budgeted item, and so we're. Five months later, we still have a. The opportunity to continue to match that budget money, but also look forward to twenty twenty-five as well, so. Do you want to have any other comments, Jason, with your, your husband? Oh, no. Great, so. Just in general, there's been general comments from our residents about our finances, and it's almost come from social media, but that's, that's social media. But the point is, that's an issue that our residents are concerned about, and I think we all. I just, I think that's, we recognize that, and there was comments made at our July meeting about the need to have more staff. And there were some issues with, discussions about cross-training and, and. That position now is vacant as of Wednesday, so Mary leaving us, so. No position, that's also part of the three items, so. It is a, you know, if you look at the description that. Jason has in the packet, this is. Item, it's quite detailed, but at the same time.
Yeah, reading.
Nine of seventeen.
Reading, sure, I didn't know whether it was Jason's job or Renee's job. It looked like a desperate to me, they were all going to.
And I think we had. That's, no, I can't deny that, because I think that's all part of, you know, if you look at this description, and this is what. They're doing right now amongst everything else, and I think that's the, the reason for this, is that we're, we're understaffed. And that was mentioned at the July meeting, and we need to do something. So this is the proposal to remedy that and have our staff working more efficiently and. Because right now, it is, it is a lot for one person to do, or between the two of them, but at the same time, there is a need for that, so.
Oh, no doubt, I. I'm thinking that we should probably, we've all got a week to get to the end of the budget. That's all upon the agenda for next week's budget talks. We get, we get through that, and then we approve, simply approve the timeline for getting started on this.
These are budget positions already, correct?
It's budgeted already, twenty twenty-four, so this.
And I think moving forward with somebody who could potentially help us with getting the finances out and transparent, that kind of. Tackles a couple of things moving forward, so we can get it organized, we can, we can have somebody that's very specifically doing that. Doesn't mean that we can't organize and look back at other things, but moving forward, I think we have to look at. Getting everything straight moving forward. The finance person, Mary's role needs filled, and anyone's a full-time employee, so I think all those make sense.
My concern is, how do, how do we get? If we would approve something like this, how do we get someone trained? Because I don't think there was much training going on with the admin assistant that was here. So, I, I have a lot of concern about that. You know, is it going to be the same? As what we've had with the last two admin assistants? Because as personnel committee, we've asked for cross-training, and it, it's been very, very little. And that's, that's a big concern, because it. It shouldn't be that one person has all the knowledge of the city. And we've talked about it with Jason, I think it needs to be spread out, and I don't think that has happened. You know, and, and I know for a fact that Mary has asked to take on some of these things. Because she does have a financial background, and it hasn't happened, so. I would be concerned about bringing someone on. Without any kind of a training plan, because it doesn't happen just by osmosis, it has to be deliberate. And it hasn't, it hasn't happened. Do we need a person? I, I think we need a person in there. But I think everybody in there, Jason on down, should know our finances and be able to do these types of things.
Well, I believe Mary was cross-trained and was taking care of the utilities, or not utilities. Utility payments for the water and sewer, so I think that was part of her training too, so she did pick up some of that training. So that, I can't, I think that was. That was a nice little bit of area that Mary did pick up, from what I understand. So I think that was effective, and that's not to say the next administrative assistant can't do that, but at the same time. We need a more, in my mind, in my mind, we need a more dedicated, and we had that person that had that ten years of experience. Could have stepped in here and, and, you know, taken the finances to another level that, that really both. Renee and Jason offer that, because I do think it's, you know, we're just trying to be more efficient in our operation, and, and no doubt, they were overworked. And probably some things fell through the cracks or went right up to the deadline, but. Whenever that happens, something else will backseat to it.
Well, where are we at in that new program? Because that new pro, that new program, the tool that you really went to bat for us to.
Oh, the accounting software?
The accounting software.
That's in process?
That almost sounded like it was going to replace a person, the amount, the amount of money it took to do it, and the amount of labor that it was going to save, so. Well, I got actually all concerned about that.
If I may speak, that is in progress, we're still setting, I think, for June.
May I take it alive?
June go live, which was part of the initial plan, it's not to replace anybody, but it is to aid. In making sure that we are more efficient in the office.
Jason, when are your trainings for that software, how often and how regular?
It's, geez, they, I don't know, they, they've got a schedule, I don't have it in front of me. We have to provide them with some information, and then they go through and they talk about it, we just did two this last week, one today.
What's your current timeline for these individuals? Does that get them in to experience some of that training?
Yes, this would get them in to help get them on board with training, and so they can get knowledge of this. Programming before we get too deep into it.
So they would be getting training from the company versus.
Correct.
You having to do it.
Correct.
Later. I appreciate the cross-training and having a plan, but we can't train anybody if we don't have them in the building. And I think with the job descriptions that Jason's written out, it really spells out to who we're going to hire and like what their strengths are going to be. We can get them in, and we can get them focused on the strengths that they would, that we're hiring for, get them on the software. And then worry about the cross-training when we get the bodies in the building, because the timeline, it, it's, it's nice, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have that many applicants. That we're going to have a perfect applicant, we're going to actually hire somebody by that time as well, so. Getting the process moving is, is just as important, I think, as, as getting the final details down.
Well, let me ask, was Mary in on that training? Because I did ask that question on the exit interview, and I got to know a lot of that.
She had not been known, because we just started it. So it's a win.
Yeah.
Well, we've had probably two, three weeks of stuff that we've been, been doing. So, but it's been a lot of the backend of getting information and getting things through, we're also getting ready to, was getting ready to get her into the diligence stuff, but with her two-week notice. There was nothing more to move forward with it. So, and I have a problem with, as I expressed to both of you prior. I can't cross-train someone until they can effectively do their job, and she was not effectively doing her job that she was hired to do as an administrative assistant, so. Until we get someone in a position where they can show that they're doing the work they were hired to do, it doesn't make it effective for us as employees to try and cross-train them to do other people's jobs, so.
And that'll be in the meeting, but I, I do have concerns that. You know, the employees that we have have not all been engaged in it, and that we, that we don't have a plan. You know, I think we, we need some kind of a plan, because.
Again, it wasn't their job duties to do those things. Pardon? It wasn't their job duties to do those things. That's not their job functions, their job assignments as they were hired to do, so. Anything above and beyond that is something that, when we have time and can do, that's when those things start to happen. And I'm going to hire, have a part-time administrative assistant, and then throw them in to do other things, we've talked about this before, though.
Well, then why should we hire somebody, Jason, if you're not willing to cross-train?
It's not that I'm not willing to cross-train, it's that I need them to do the job they were hired to do before we can get them cross-trained to do other jobs that other people.
I can understand.
I'm sorry, it's not that I'm against cross-training, it's that I need them to do the job they were hired to do before I can start cross-training them to do other people's jobs, that simple. I mean, if we were a little more discussion about your point of cross-training, you know, if we were to put, what I would envision, if we were to put cross-training into the finance officer. To me, that would be, I'm not sure what I'm being hired for. You know, you're, you're putting a question in that person that's applying for finance offering, if you were to say that essential, this cross-training. And to me, that's, that's somewhat of a turnoff in applying for the job, because I have my experience for doing this, I want to do this, and here's my application. And by cross-training to me is, not that it's important, but I think that's kind of after the fact of getting the first in here first. And then talk about cross-training. Cross-training is a criteria for meeting, they're going to say, what, what's this cross-training for? I'm, this is my experience. Why should I leave someplace else to come in for this job and plan on being cross-trained? I mean, that might be just a natural for a profession of a finance officer, I don't know. But to me, putting cross-training in a job description is, is. For a specific finance person, you know, had we hired this person in July with ten years of experience, you know, that was. That person brought a lot of experience to us that we wanted, that you guys, that was interviewed, that I think was important, that. But cross-training is a, is a point number eight, it's, I don't see that as an effective way of finding candidates. Because I do think we need a dedicated finance officer, you know, when you talk about a one-point-two, one-point-three, one-point-five million dollar budget. We need checks and balances, we need checks and balances, and that's what a finance, finance officer would do. When we do an audit, read through the report that they gave us, and all the reports, and their mental, they explain how they do audits. It's not line by line by line by line of, they take samplings within the areas, and that's what they do, they're independent auditors. But if we had a finance to help. Do the checks and balances, you know, if any organization you belong to, like, whether it's Gold Rush, or age-friendly, or your church, whatever organization lines. You have one person that brings in the money, another person writes the checks or balances the books, today we have one person doing that. And to our citizens, that's not, you know, it's getting down, the audits are coming up quick, but the point does, it's not. May not be as transparent as we would like, or our citizens would like. And if we have a dedicated finance officer, that's all they do exactly in this job description, it's a very detailed, very thorough. There are applicants out there, we had seventeen of them applied, and they were going down to four or five, and one was selected, but. I just don't see, now, if you want to put cross-training into an administrative. Position, I think that's fine, I don't think that needs to be in the, in the job description, but I think there's more potential for cross-training when it comes into an office. You may find out the person is not really, all they can handle is their job assignment, and they're not really ready for cross-training, but they can handle their job okay, for what they were hired for. So the cross-training is a nice thing to have, but it's not a requirement for the initial public position.
I would, I would argue that it would have to at some point be a requirement, you know, because you can't have one person. Knowing everything, I mean, because we ran into that already.
Well, maybe we haven't done a good job as we should have done in our interviews, I don't know. Something was, we missed it somewhere, and if it's in the interview or in their job description, that's the risk you take, that's why we have a three-month probation period. That's the opportunity to really see if they can fit in there. For a full-time, part-time, we don't have, because there's no benefits or anything like that, so.
Point eighteen on this, and actually, that, that, if I were to read that, I would understand as there are other duties that I will be asked to do covering. Other employees, it says other clerical, financial, and organizational duties may be assigned, that's the very last point of, of that, essential functions. And so I don't think it would be out of order for somebody to be asked to, once they have learned the system and, and learned their job. Description and their functioning at a higher level to be able to cover other things.
Yeah, that's what I'll. I guess the question that I have, I'm not questioning whether. It's on here that they're going, they. Part of their job description is being cross-trained, it's, it's a question of whether it will happen. Because we have had staff that haven't gotten cross-trained, and I don't. I don't want the city to be put in that position again, I mean. And again, that's another conversation that will be had, but. That's, that's my input on it.
I think these are all important things that have been mentioned on what's going on, taking a look at it. Personally, I take a look, and we have our budget meetings that are coming up next week. We get a chance to take a look at everything, even though this might have been budgeted for this year. We have to take a look at all kinds of things that are coming up that we, you know, hadn't anticipated, and one of them is some of the stuff that's over at the fire department. And other things that are going on with, with the city. That just waiting until after we finish everything that there is for us going through the final budgeting is only a difference of a couple of weeks. That's what I would propose, to wait until that point in time, take a look at this stuff at that point. You know, there's, there's no, no real hurry that we're going to do anything between now and the end of the year anyway, but I think that that would be the smart way to do it. So we know exactly what we're getting into for next year.
Well, I think the workshops are important, and we're going forward for twenty twenty-five, but. These three positions are in our current twenty twenty-four budget.
But it also doesn't mean.
Why are we. Pushing us off to twenty twenty-five when we have the funding to take care of it today? Granted, we may not have people in place by the end of the year, but the point is, we're, we're starting the process of, of interviewing and committing that we're going to increase our setup.
Well, by turning around and looking at, you have the budget that there is for twenty twenty-four. Yeah, but that budget also has to be what's going to be going on with twenty twenty-five, and I'm looking at the increase that we have for our tax burden, or is for the, our citizens right now. And what's critical, so again, it's, it's. What I'd like to do is wait till afterwards and get a chance to look at everything we've got in, because those expenses are going to continue on to next year. That's a wise way to do it, I think that's a smart way for our, our residents to be able to realize that we're trying to look at everything that there is, not just at what's available this year, but what we're going to be pulling into next year.
Well, regardless, regardless, whether we're budgeting for this year or not. You know, next, next year is another year, is this, is this money still laying, still laying around? That it never, never got used.
Well, it doesn't.
And we would be new funds coming out for next year, so when we do, when we're doing the budget, something we keep in the budget shouldn't be an issue.
Well, budget of money that was designated for this year, just my understanding, it does not carry over to the next year.
That's right, it's budget surplus, correct? We have, we have some, we have some shortfalls in our budget, we're.
Well, right now, we're.
What did we do?
You look at the overall budget, what was in the November council packet, we're only about sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent of the budget today. So, you know, we're, we're, we're meeting our expenditures.
But we're, but we're over in other departments, you know, like.
That's, there's issues with other departments, there's no doubt about that.
Between, between legal fees and fire department, there are issues.
That, that doesn't mean that we have to be like, you know, a government and, and part of that stuff, and even though we are part of that, but. To spend a hundred percent of what there is as budgeted doesn't, to me, make a wise business decision. You know, and I think that we've got to run the city closer as a business than we do as, as, you know, spend every money, every penny that's there, you know, before the end of the year. You know, and, and play that game for our citizens, I, I think it's, it's, we need to be wiser in what we're doing and, and look down the road, not just. You know, what's there today, so again, it's, it's my way to, or my idea would be to put everything off until after we finish the budget, which is. Take a look at these things, which is next week, you know?
So, if I understand what you're saying is, these are positions, finance officer, it's in the budget, but. We have an administrative position, we have a public works person, so it sounds to me like there's risk of losing those two positions.
Well, we'll have to see what comes up in the budget if we turn around and look at that next week, when we go through it again.
I just, I want to be clear, so everybody understands that next week's budget meetings aren't a decision, the decision will come at the council meeting in December seventeenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's not just till next week, it's actually pushed later into December.
Well, which is only a couple of weeks away from, from that, Jason, it's no big deal, so I think that we need to wait and see what we've got, so we know exactly what we're biting off for next year, I think it's a smart way to do it.
I understand we're, we're waiting until the budget makes sense, but if you want to run it like a business, every business has a finance officer. And we don't currently have somebody that's focused on that, and so getting somebody in early and starting at the very beginning of the year. Just gives them that much more time to be, I mean, most of the training happens on the job real time, and. We risk the, the losing this other company doing their training for them, that's going to be an expense in. Man-hours to train this person now, that we're already paying for this other business to come in and do training. But if we're going to lose two or three trainings. From, for pushing this back, for pushing this back, because the timeline's going to change, right?
Well, what I would look at, first of all, you've got Thanksgiving coming in, you've got Christmas, it's coming in after that, that's, that's very short, you know, within this next month, and the holidays kick in. To turn around and, and look at what there is, you're not going to have the trainings that you think you might be having during that time.
Oh, but they're going to start at the beginning of the year, correct?
I don't think you're going to find anybody that's going to start at the beginning of the year by the time you turn around and, and put this in for, for what needs to be done. You know, and I, and, you know, I, we've been through this stuff, and, and with other positions that there have been, so it doesn't happen that quick, Daniel, and I, and I understand your point, and, and point well-taken, you know, so.
I just think getting the ball rolling, getting the word out there, even if, even if somebody's not going to, at, at least it's out there, at least it's, it's started, the process has started.
Well, I think it's been a good discussion of what we've had, you want to put it up to a vote, Dan, for what goes on?
I got a couple more comments. So when we talked about this in July. Both you and Jim were saying, yes, we need someone, I agree, we are understaffed, and those are your comments, and here we are. Trying to fill current positions, and one that was budgeted, trying to fill budgets, and we're saying we need to wait a little bit longer, when. To me, that indicates there's risk of us being more understaffed with your comments. Right now, it's, it's, it's budgeted money that we're dealing with, and I, you know, with what Daniel was saying, we just need. You know, we can start the process, we can have somebody interviewing in January.
Well, like I said, I, I want to wait till after we finish everything that there is, and we'll take a look at the seventeenth, and when we get everything finalized, and then we can take a look at that point. I think a couple of weeks is not going to make that much of a difference, and I think it's a wise thing to do for our citizens.
You know, it's not so much waiting, but I just think it's the comments being made that just kind of are very not supportive of our staff, our city administrator. They spend a lot of time and effort, I guess, in July, now that with Mary leaving, we had to put another one together, Caleb leaving, we've had to put another one together. So, we, there has been a lot of effort put into this, and they're all trying to make things happen smoothly, there's no hiccups. I sense hiccups, I hope that's not the case, but here we're dealing with current budgeted money. That we're delaying for another budget, that we have no idea, it's, it's a big budget, no doubt about that. But.
Let me ask.
Like, there was a commitment to take care of staff in July, and.
Let me ask, Jason, so looking at now with two positions open, this is a creative position. And the admin assistant was a standing position that was vacated. Have you put any thought into? Perhaps waiting on the admin assistant position? If this one was filled?
I can't honestly say that I put any thought into it, no. Am I opposed to it? No, but it's, I just, I haven't put any thought into it, so.
When did Mary start? That, who was that?
Shortly after.
For that, so we, we did have, we did have that space filled all summer, if I recall, we. Did, or helped, helped, came out, we did bring Caleb on, that was sometime mid-summer, I believe. You know, to.
About the same time as Mary?
Was it about the same time? It's not that we haven't brought people on to help, it's more that, where did they go?
Yeah, and I, I think that that's another discussion that needs to be taken up with the personnel committee and. Another meeting that we need to have to discuss some of these things, and. You know, especially with the exit interviews and, and reviewing a lot of things that are associated with that. So, again, I would, I'd like to put it up for. Take a look at just putting this thing off, till after we get everything finalized, I think it's a wise thing to do.
So if we go into our budget workshops. And. A little concerned about the workshop itself, I mean, there's no doubt we need our, we need to put some effort in the. Taking a serious look at our tax levy and everything, so I just hope that. Personnel's a big part of it, and I hope that's given it some serious consideration, because to do, continue on with less people is really putting the city in a bad position. And causing for overwork and no council support of our current staff, so I think that's a issue we need to take seriously, and. Let's see where it goes. Any other comments? See none, all those in favor of the motion to.
Is the motion to wait, to wait till after?
No, we have a motion to.
Motion's on the table. Okay.
Motion is to. Approve the proposed timeline and the divided minimum and have the city administrator proceed with and conduct the hiring of each position. So that's the motion. We have a second.
Which, which is there already was done, Daniel, seconded already.
Already seconded the motion at the beginning.
Oh, okay.
Had, had seconded.
For the discussion.
Okay, all those in favor? Sign if I'm being saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ooze?
No. Name, name.
It's, uh, disapproved. Uh, purchase of a do more for public works. There's a memo. In your, um. Packet from. Kane, Kane, would you want to? Any comment, any questions for Kane, I guess, about the memo? The results of, we talked about that already.
And on that one, Kane, I think you said that you've already got, uh, the budget that there is for that for this year. And I know we came up with pretty good.
Soul.
I was, was really happy with what we got out of it for.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I was happy with it. Uh, I wasn't happy with the amount of bids, but we got our money.
How many bids did we have already?
One. So those, those large mowers are very difficult to sell. You gotta have big property, even the, the commercial guys don't like those big moors.
Is it five foot or six foot?
Six foot. So we did get our money. We got what we wanted out of it. I'm happy with it. Uh, I do have the money in my budget for purchase of another one. And that's what I'm requesting tonight.
Make a motion to put, if Kane to get that.
And I make a second on that one.
Let me ask a question. Now, you're saying they're, they're too big to get rid of. Are you saying that when we auction them? Or, is that's going somewhere, right? Or is that? Is that a little trade-in?
I think we have a choice of a trade-in or.
On a trade-in, but are you saying it's hard to get rid of them if we do sealed bids?
Yeah, it's tough getting rid of them.
Your common person isn't necessarily going to.
Absolutely. I know my yard, I can only have about a forty-eight incher, so.
Well, now, when we, we did it for two years on this last year too, and this year where we, we sold it outright instead of doing a trade-in. And, and we've been successful at both of those years on the way it's worked out, you know, to be able to do that, you know, and, and. Worst comes to worst, we could always do a trade-in and not have to worry about selling it outright as well, correct?
That's an option, yep.
So with that said, we got more this way than we would have on the trade-in.
Trade-in is like sixty-five hundred. We had a minimum bid on it, you remember?
Yeah, we, we, which has worked out. I've been saying that was, it worked out really well.
It worked out. It did. It did.
Six foot, six foot moors aren't real conclusive to do the prim work like you did six foot. We use six foot moors for training.
Like I said, this year it worked out well. There's money in the budget and, uh, so, uh. Yeah, I'd like to move forward with the, with the new purchase. And that's what I'm requesting tonight.
Have you ever considered it, like a twelve-foot bat wing mower?
Yeah, I have considered it. We're kind of right in the middle of our routine right now, so we'd have to really change things up if we wanted to go down that road. And that's.
What, what would a bat wing cost?
More than bat wing cost? You'd probably spend about ninety-five grand for a six. No, 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 listen now. If you spend ninety-five grand, it's sixteen-foot bat wing mower. You get six, seven years out of it. We're more than thirty, we're more than thirty-eight years a week, you say?
Well, I'd say closer to eighty.
Well, we, we were, we were more than five hundred a week at schools. And we get, we need to get eight, nine years out of ones.
We're selling them every three years right now.
Pardon?
We're selling them every three years right now.
During a rotation to dump them, but, but in my opinion, taking a mower like what we have. And, and throwing it away because it's got two hundred hours on it, it's a waste of money.
Yeah, even seven hundred hours is kind of a waste of money.
Exactly.
Big capital.
This one, this one have, it, it only had a couple hundred hours.
Six hundred and eighty-five.
Still is.
I should probably pay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Probably pay them.
Yeah, paying seventeen thousand for them and selling them for almost eight thousand and so we're.
Yeah.
Taking a nine thousand dollar bath every year.
Right.
If we contact a lawn care professional, I would guarantee they're not selling their mowers at eight hundred hours.
Exactly.
So, and, and if we have these, this full-time. Person in the shop. Uh, that could be something that they would be working on. We maybe be able to jump these out to a six-year rotation versus a three-year rotation.
Something wouldn't.
He's down a mower.
Wouldn't hurt to review that idea.
Yeah, they picked it up. They picked it up a week ago, so we're down a mower, so. I mean.
Whatever you're saying, this is the good stuff that there is for the budget discussion to be able to take a look at that stuff. And that's, that's where it should come out is to open that, absolutely.
I don't trade my truck in because it needs new tires and rotors.
And, and, and that, it's all, good point, Daniel. Very good point.
All right, um, any more comments? All of them favor of the more purchase? Sign if I'd be saying aye.
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 Ooze? It's approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Six thirty-six. Six thirty-six. You second, Jim Richards?
Yeah.
Okay. All favor, sign if I'd be saying aye.
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 Ooze? Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.